All right. Good morning, everyone. We'll get started here. We paused for just a few moments. We our Zoom link that went out to everyone was caught by some spam filter. So we just resent that out to everyone, giving them a few minutes to log on. So we may have a few more join in, but good morning to everybody and thank you for being here. Relden Owens, Executive Director for Louisiana AGC. And we want to, a couple of housekeeping things first, we are recording this session. And secondly, we asked that you would mute your computer. If you do have a question, we ask that you put that in the chat and we will address that as it comes up. I will give a couple of comments and then our lobbying partners of capital partners with Darrell Cahoon and Jesse McCormick have a few comments and then we our subject matter experts that we had hired to assist us during this special tax session, Jason DeQueer and his team at Adventis will go through kind of the morning after, right? This is the Monday morning quarterback, if you will. And so as you are aware, the governor and the legislature tackled reforming the tax code and trying to make it more competitive and more simplistic. We appreciate their efforts. That was a decades old needed something. I think there's a lot of questions. Anytime there's change, there's always questions. One thing that I do want to address from the outset that I think is important. The, we have known every since it took us 10 plus years to get additional funding for DOTD from the vehicle sales tax dedication. The way that worked, it was 60% of the available sales tax from vehicle sales was dedicated to the construction sub fund of the transportation trust fund. This is a dedicated and protected, we called it the lockbox. And ever since we got that money dedicated, we knew we were going to have to protect it because obviously it took us so long to get it there. So for well over a year, we've been protecting that and explaining the importance of it and how it doesn't need to be touched. I will say that for leading up to this session, we felt like that it was not in play and not on the table. The governor was supportive of us and legislative leadership as well. The Sunday before the tech special tax session ended and I sent all this in a communication. So if you, you know, in case you did not get it, I'm repeating this, but I did send all this in a communication via email to you. It was also in our Friday focus and we also talked about it some live meetings. But the Sunday before vehicle sales tax came on the table. And so we worked pretty hard all day that Sunday and felt like it was kind of a moot point again and not in play. We knew that we would have to do some more defense come the regular session, which is a fiscal session. Then on the Thursday before the session adjourned on Friday, the expanded sales tax on services bill that would broaden the base failed, creating a pretty large hole, 600 million or so. And at that point, everything was on the table. And then for a period of time on that Thursday, it looked like the special session may stall and not progress forward. That got worked out and it quickly became apparent that it was tax reform at all cost. Whatever gets messed up will get fixed down the road. And so on Friday, we had a lot of conversations with legislative leadership and the governor's office and were reassured as much as possible that although there would be a temporary suspension of that vehicle sales tax flowing into the construction sub fund, that with expected surplus dollars, they would backfill that amount for the fiscal year beginning July 1, might even have enough to cover both of the years. But they knew that it was important and that they would take care of it and quote fix it in the regular session, either through surplus or through additional dollars. So that is where we sit and that is our efforts going forward. We, we hold on to those promises and hold them at their word, take them at their word. And we will continue to work as we have for years to get more funding and protect that funding once we get it. So I wanted to talk about that kind of at the outset here because that is the specific funding piece of it. And now I think we should turn our attention and let's get into the details of what we anticipate from the session going forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Jason and to Darrell. And as I said, we are recording this because there will be a lot of specific, particular things. I do want to point your attention back to one thing in this last Friday's edition of the Friday focus. We shared an article from Adventis on what happened during the session. That is a great read and a really good resource to you. At the conclusion after today, everyone that registered for the webinar today will send a copy of that article and a link to the recording to this webinar. With that, Jason and Darrell, take it away. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah. And Darrell, I'll go ahead and defer to you for any kind of, you know, high level comments before I get into the specific tax provisions.
Yeah. And I'll be brief on that because that's where everyone really needs to be on this thing and that's the details. And the details were very sketchy. You know, we could have gone into session the Monday before the Friday that we adjourned and, and got what we ended up getting at because it was just an absolute shootout at the OK Corral, most of the session. No one knew. In fact, I've been told by senators that, and they're the ones who confected, I guess you would call it a compromise, if you want to call it that. They, they can confected the package of bills. The House had no knowledge of it and many of the senators, senators who had to vote on it first didn't know much about it either. And we were doing our very best to try to track that thing. It was a very interesting time. The only thing that'll probably be more interesting is the regular session coming up, which is a compressed tax type revenue type session that I counsel Relden and we talked a little bit and I said, we need to clear the decks because everything that's going to happen is going to revolve around fixing some of the things that were incorporated, incorporated into the package. So that's just my, my brief overview. Yeah, we were very much interested in the vehicle sales tax big time and then had to play it in that, the entire thing. And it became an object only after so many of the massive components in this bill started failing. And that was the result of it. Like I said, the, the, the regular session coming up will be the real package, in my opinion. So Jesse, how about you?
I think you nailed it, Darrell. I'm excited to hear what Jason's got to say and kind of break it down to details, but yeah, I think you did a good job.
Me too. And I'm waiting to hear too, Jason.
No pressure, right? Well, we'll, we'll deliver the information. I don't know how much of it you actually want to hear, but we'll definitely. So again, thank you all for allowing us to partner with, with AGC and Relden. Again, thank you for your, for your leadership and working with you again in another, in another session. Just to kind of go around the horn real quick, I have a couple of people from the Adventist team on the call. I have Rachel Averit, if you'll kind of wave. Yeah, that's one of our sales and use tax. She is a director at Adventis and Jeff is over there is also in sales and use tax. And there are quite a bit of sales and use tax provision. So I'll have them get into the weeds even more when we get to those provisions. And then I have Mary Robinson sitting next to Jeff in the conference room, was, was down at the legislature all day, every day and going through all the bills, amendments and working to make sure that this, this industry stays as protected as possible. And then I think many of you know me, I'm Jason DeQueer. I'm a co-owner of Adventis Consulting and owner of Adventis Law. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and jump into the presentation. If y'all were able to attend the pre-session version, the presentation format will look familiar. And so same template, at that time, we didn't know what they were going to do with the bills. Now we're going to take that template and fill in what exactly they did and, and what they accomplished. And so I'll go ahead and jump in. And this is the, the, the business tax competitive. Well, this is the population map that I showed you and, and one of the things that they wanted to do is try to reverse the outmigration of population from Louisiana. I'm not going to jump into any detail of this, but legislators were of the opinion that if we can reform our tax climate, then hopefully that will play a role in changing the outmigration. Obviously, one of those pieces is getting rid of the personal income tax. That is something that they, that they set out to do. Obviously, they knew they couldn't do it alone in this session, but I'll talk about how they're setting the stage to eliminate the personal income tax in the future. As we know, Texas doesn't have a personal income tax. Florida doesn't have a personal income tax. Tennessee doesn't have a personal income tax right there in our region. And Mississippi is planning to eliminate theirs. And you can see those are more towards the shades and darker shades of blue, whereas Louisiana is kind of in the opposite outcome there. This is the tax competitiveness map. You saw the last map. It had rankings for all the states. Well, they just came out with their new rankings. When we showed it last time, it was below 40, meaning 40 out of 50 states. We were about 44th and 21, we moved up to 40th with the new rankings. And Mary went in and filled in what the other states were doing in terms of tax competitiveness in the region. This was the other reason they wanted to do tax reform. The 40 in their opinion, and I think in any of our opinions is unacceptable. That's how complicated our structure is. The original package headed state in tax was projected to take us from 40th to roughly number eight in the top 10. Because they weren't able to get every element of the package and the rates had to go up just a little bit on, on, on corporate income tax. They're looking now and projected more to be around 25th, 26th is what I'm, is what I'm hearing. So they didn't get all the way where they wanted to be, but from 40th to a jump in the twenties is still one of the largest jumps that I have ever seen of any state as I've been looking at reform across, across the country. All right, here's the package as it, it passed. And again, I know the session involved more issues than just tax. There were some budget bills. There was some bills on crime. There were some bills on the judicial system. I'm, I'm not going to get into any of those. I'm just focusing on the tax reform piece and the tax bills. HB seven, this is the constitutional amendment. This is what is known as the Article seven rewrite. The barrier impediment to doing broad scale tax reform historically was that you had all of these constitutional provisions in Article seven that had to be changed. And instead of putting four, five, six amendments, changing each and every provision in Article seven to get reformed on, they're just rewriting the entire Article seven constitution and they're putting it all on the ballot for one vote. I'll show you what that, what that ballot language looks like in a minute, in a minute. Most of the changes in Article seven relate to property tax. Okay? Most of the property tax provisions are embedded in Article seven. And this is begins that broader discussion that the administration wants to have with local government. If you're moving property tax provisions from the constitution to statute, then you're inviting or trying to get local governments to be able to do more funding on their own, make it easier to fund their own needs. And then the state would not have to appropriate or dedicate as much money back to local governments. That's what they're setting this structure up to do so that eventually they can repeal the personal income tax. But they needed to make the structure more nimble for those things to happen. That's really what's behind the Article seven rewrite. HB 11 by Representative Darrell Desatels are the property tax provisions that are going into statute. It is basically the companion bill to Article seven. So once you move these things out of the constitution and put them in statute, you then have to have a statutory bill to state how these things are going to work. And that's what HB 11 does. HB two is the bill that reduces the corporate income tax. It now reduces the corporate income tax down to a rate of five and a half percent. They initially wanted to go to three and a half percent, but because some programs, some incentive programs got put back in the package, they had to increase the, the rate in order to pay for those. One of those that was talked about, Relden, I know that was near and dear, was the historical tax credit program. That actually got put back in. It was scheduled to be eliminated, but then they had to pay for it and they paid for it by increasing the rate some. HB three, it repealed the corporate franchise tax. So for those of you all who have to pay that franchise tax, the good news start in January 2026, you no longer have to pay that complicated, uncompetitive, just a bad tax on the assets of your business. HB eight gets into the sales tax package. This is what is known as digital goods and digital goods taxation. They are creating a definition in law for what digital goods are. A lot of us refer to those as kind of the things we now stream music and books and those kinds of things. But it does get into software and software could be critical to how you have your business set up and the use of software. The sales and use tax team will get into some of the specifics of that. HB 10 is the bill that they increased the sales tax rate. Remember going into the session, the point four five of the 4.45 was set to expire in June of 2025, next year. They had a choice of either extending it or letting it fall off. Obviously with the budget situation, the way that it was, the administration introduced the package with it being extended, the point four five. The House, in order to move this bill, because it is a tax increase bill, dropped it to point four oh. And then, as we know, and we've talked about, Darrell mentioned in the Senate, because HB nine, the bill that had all the 40 additional services was supposed to generate probably over a billion dollars of new taxes at the state and local level. Because they could not get that bill from the House to the Senate, they are not going to be taxing all of those services that they were reporting to tax. But they had no way to pay for the tax cuts that had advanced. They were going to use that bill. So what they did was they used HB 10 to increase the sales tax rate from 4.45 to 5%. And that's where they're getting the money now to pay for the tax cuts, the personal income tax, corporate income tax and the repeal of the corporate franchise tax. And then the last bill, they wanted to change the way they did severance tax. They could not get that bill or an agreement with the oil and gas industry. The bill did pass, but all it did was create an audit compliance mechanism for the horizontal well exemption. It really got stripped. There's nothing that is I see of any consequence to this industry. Couple of things to note on this page. You may say, well, what happened to House Bill one? That was the bill to cut personal income tax. In order to get tax reform to pass and get a deal struck, they took HB one and they folded it in to HB 10. So now HB 10 has both the personal income tax cut as well as the sales tax increase and the elimination of certain sales tax exemption. You may be saying, well, why did they do that? There were many senators that were willing to vote for the personal income tax reduction. Obviously, that's a much easier vote and were less willing to vote for close to a billion dollars in tax increases by raising the sales tax rate. And the Senate president decided, I'm not going to give you the option of voting for one and not voting for the other. So I'm going to combine the cut with the increase. And so if you want to cut to personal income tax, you're then forced to vote for the increase on the sales tax. And when they combined it, they had enough senators that were willing to vote for both in combination. And that's how they were able to get tax reform across the line and up to the governor's desk. The timeline is going to be critical for the.
Hey, Jason. This is Relden. I want to jump in with one question on that previous slide because I think the timing of it is, is important. I just want to restate on the historical tax credit. As I understand, I think as you explained, but that is, that is an element that is important to our group. I just want to confirm that the historical tax credit, as it was previously structured, did remain in force and did not go away and did not change. Is that correct?
That's correct. It was, it was, the, the cap was reduced slightly on the program, but that was part of the compromise. And we're, when we break down each one of these bills, we'll have some more specific information on that program in, in that slide.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. The timeline, as I mentioned, is important. It's, it's good to know all these things that are happening at a high level, but you need to know when they become effective and when you have a responsibility for, for that particular tax. As you know, the session actually ended early. Once they were able to get it, it had a pause when that sales tax on services bill didn't pass because they had no idea how they were going to pay for these things. They eventually kind of gathered around, had a bunch of meetings, came out with a plan. And then they advanced that plan quickly. It did not take any time at all. So much so that the session was scheduled to end on the 25th, they ended on the 22nd. It's rare they ended early. As some of you all probably saw on the ballot this, this weekend, they're actually passing constitutional amendments to allow them to extend session days when you have tight deadlines or when you can't get a compromise. Ironically, they finished earlier here. But starting January 1 of next year, that's when the sales tax rate increases to 5%. So you know, you'll need to adjust your systems and that sort of thing, both on, on the sales side as well as the accrual side for, for, for that 5% rate. The individual income tax will decrease to a flat 3%. And the corporate income tax will go from its current seven and a half down to a flat 5 and a half percent. Coming behind that in March 29th, the Article seven rewrite HB seven will be on the ballot. And that's the constitutional amendment. I'll show you the ballot language in a second. I do get the question asked all the time. If the Article seven amendment does not pass, does that mean the rest of the elements of this tax reform package also fails? And the answer to that is no. The sales tax, the corporate income tax, the individual income tax pieces, the franchise tax, those can all survive on its own. There was nothing in Article seven that needed to pass in order for those rate reductions or increases to go into effect. However, the property tax provisions would not go into effect if it doesn't pass on March 29th. Coming right behind that is the April 14th, the beginning of the regular fiscal session. That's where Darrell was talking about. We can now go in and Relden, if there's some things that we need to fix as it relates to funding mechanism or other inadvertent tax changes, unintended consequences, we can fix those in the next regular fiscal session because it is a tax action. And then for some of you who may have LED incentive programs or utilize some of the LED incentive programs, all of those programs will sunset on June 30th of 2025. That's right after the fiscal session. They did that intentionally because the LED secretary is planning to rewrite and revamp or modernize many of those LED programs as we know them today. She's going to try to accomplish that during the fiscal session. If she's successful, then those programs will take the place of the programs we have on the books today. And then that's when the sunset would go into effect. January 1 of 2026, that's when the corporate franchise tax will be repealed and you no longer have to report or pay that. Just for those of you who are unaware, franchise tax is paid a year in advance. So for the 2026 year, you actually pay your franchise tax when you go to file your return in May of 2026. It's unlike income tax where you pay it, you know, a few months after the fiscal year. You actually pay franchise tax in advance. In July 1 of 2026, the inventory tax credit for C corporations only, for C corporations only will sunset. To create some sort of compromise with the legislature, the administration is still allowing for the inventory tax credit to flow through to those taxpayers who are set up as an S corp or an LLC. Essentially, if you claim the inventory tax credit through the personal income tax return, it will continue to be available for you. If you are, if you're paying it through your corporate income tax return, it will sunset July 1 of 2026. So different treatment for different types of companies. But obviously that's what they felt they needed to do in order to strike, strike the compromise. And then you'll also see the local option inventory tax exemption election deadline. Through Article seven and Desatels bill HB 11, local governments will be given the option to exempt inventory in their parish up till July 1 of 2026. They don't have to, but they can if they want to. And I'll talk about how the state is trying to incentivize them to exempt it. Obviously, if they, if they exempt it, there's no need for the credit anymore. But if they don't exempt it and you're set up as a C corp, then you would not still get that credit to offset that, that, that burden. And then in 2030, they actually set up the sales tax structure that the 5% would automatically be reduced to 4.75% starting January of 2030. So that's the timeline for the package. I'm going to jump into some of the individual bills here. HB seven, this is now act one. Once the governor signs them, he signed them last week. He then assigns act numbers to them. So this is the Article seven rewrite. They're going to go in the constitution and say the highest that the personal income tax rate can be is 3.75%. So if this does not pass, the rate will still go down to 3%, but right now in the constitution, it states the highest the rate can be at 4.75. That would just remain, even though it'll be a 3% rate, but they also want to push it down. They're also creating a provision, which I know has been concerning to some, that it will now take a two thirds vote to enact any new exemption, exclusion, deduction, credit or rebate program. That's the same threshold as it is to raise a tax. Right now, it's only a simple majority vote to put in an exemption or a deduction into the tax code. It will now be a two thirds vote, which will make it much more difficult to enact any new ones going forward. The reason for that is they eliminated a lot of exemptions and deductions and credits in order to pay for the tax cuts. And so they want to make it harder for those to be put back in to the tax code in the future. They're doing also the same thing with property tax exemptions, but in even higher threshold because you do have some property tax exemptions that are in the constitution. Local governments wanted an even higher protectionary mechanism because those exemptions are now being put in statute that it would require a three fourths vote to enact any new property tax exemptions. That's again, local governments trying to make sure they're careful in that the legislature can't just come around and exempt their revenue stream in the future since property tax will now be governed primarily by, by statute. It will also now create a separate category in the constitution for business inventory tax. It will still be taxed at 15%, but they're creating a subcategory of business personal property tax and calling it business inventory tax. This is so they can make the statutory changes in HB 11, which would give local governments now two things, the option to exempt inventory. They will also give them the flexibility to reduce that 15% rate at the parish level if they so choose. So they could do the outright exemption up by, by July 1 of 2026, or they could just phase down the rate if they wanted to. We'll see if they decide to do that. Previously, they could not phase down the rate because it was in the constitution and you can't make constitutional changes without changing the constitution. So that's some of the flexibility of this Article seven rewrite. And then they will also be combining the revenue stabilization fund. There's no real need for that since we don't have a corporate franchise tax anymore. Certain revenues above what he collected would go in this revenue stabilization fund, but we no longer have a franchise tax, so you won't get any revenues from it. And they're combining that with the rainy day fund, which is also known as the budget stabilization fund. And then they're going to use that excess revenue in the revenue stabilization fund to try to incentivize local governments to exempt inventory. If they exempt it, they'll. If they exempt it, they'll get a one-time payment up to $15 million, or they could phase it out over five years with a payment up to $10 million. And in terms of the ballot language, people ask me, do you think Article 7 will pass on the ballot in March 29? And what I say is, they wrote it extremely favorable for passage. And if you just look at the language here, just starting out, do you include revisions to lower the maximum rate of income tax? Well, who wouldn't want to vote to have your income tax lowered? Increase tax deductions for senior citizens over 65 or citizens over 65. I shouldn't call them senior citizens because I'm about to be one of them soon, but citizens over 65. Provide for a government growth limit, provide for property tax exemptions, and retain the home state exemption. People were worried about whether or not they were going to eliminate it. They're not. They're going to retain it, but they want to make sure they put that in the language, as well as keeping exemptions for religious organizations. They're putting a provision or part of the question is, do you want a permanent teacher salary increase by requiring a surplus payment to teacher retirement debt and make other modifications? The way that it's written, when you see income tax, teacher pay raise, protection of our citizens, protection of religious organizational groups, I think is written very favorably for passage. Now, is that all of what this does? No, because I just talked about it does many more things. It just isn't mentioned based on the way the ballot language is written. All right, and then Darryl, if you want to chime in here with me, and Reldon was also talking about this. This wasn't part of the tax package per se, but it was part of some of the budgeting reforms and issues they were going through. So this is where the motor vehicle sales tax is dedicated. It's in Title 48, and this is what they did to it. So this first provision, they just struck through it in law. The reason they struck through it is because it's no longer applicable. This has already happened. They already dedicated that money, but it was scheduled to end in 2024. So I just call that cleanup, okay, because 24 has already occurred. The cutoff date for 24 was fiscal year 24. It ended June 30 of 2024, and they already moved that money. But it was going to be 60% for each year thereafter. Now, what they're doing is they're saying it's only 60% for 24, 25. And then in 25, 26, in 26, 27, as you can see from the third bullet point, they capped it at $40 million, and it's got to be deposited into a fund for I-10 Calca Shu River Bridge and other I-10 improvements. And then basically, it returns to us in 27, 28 at 60% and for each year thereafter. So you can kind of see they made a change to it for the first two years or for 25, 26, 24, 25, 25, 26, and 26, 27, and then it returns to where it was in 27, 28. So Reldon or Darryl, I don't know if y'all want to jump in on that before I go to the next slide.
So just to connect the two dots from what I had said previously, you know, everything is in alignment with exactly what Jason said. And so to put dollars with it, it was about, we'd estimated about 300 million. What had flowed in was about 285. So with the 40 still flowing in, that is a reduction of 245 million into the construction subfund. That is the dollar amount that we have, the promise from the governor and Senate and House leadership that they're going to backfill with surplus dollars for the fiscal year beginning July 1 of 2025. And they think that there will be enough either in that year or in the following year to do the same thing for the next fiscal year. So their plan, their intent is while these dollars will not flow from the vehicle sales tax for the next two fiscal years, they will be supplemented with one-time surplus dollars, thereby creating kind of a bridge that we don't even fill the gap or the difference in until they start flowing back in regularly in fiscal year 27. Now, again, we'll see. I feel pretty confident for the fiscal year beginning 7/1/25, based on all the numbers from Revenue Estimating Conference. I feel pretty confident that they're going to have a surplus and that we'll get those dollars. That next fiscal year is, you know, where kind of a little more of my personal concern is. But that just adds some numbers to what Jason was saying. That's all I have, Darryl, unless you have anything to add.
I think Jesse might, if he's still on, he had to jump to something. Okay, good.
Yeah, just a little bit of politics around that is when they met with DOTD during the decision-making process of how they're going to come up with an additional 280 million. DOTD told the legislative leadership and the kind of the guys that were in the negotiation room that they could absorb that for the next two years from, I guess, some existing money. I think Reldon and I just call it, you know, mythical money that just they can materialize out of nowhere sometimes. But the only project that remained on there because it's bonded is the Calca Shu Bridge project. It's going to continue to get its 40 million. And just for an irony perspective and thumbs in that I think when we start to go to fight back for the vehicle sales tax and fight for some additional revenue besides that is this entire session was based off of taking things out of the Constitution because it didn't give them flexibility and moving them into statute. And something that our budgeting experts have always complained about is how we bond too much like out in front. You know, we have these long-term bonds that legislators and people had nothing to do with, they end up having to pay. But the only project that's getting funded is the one that was bonded, and we got our money swept in one year under a simple majority vote. So, you know, you could argue either way, but I think as far as roads go, they have set the stage for things like three-fourths and extended a higher level of passage rates for things not to be taken and going. I think when we look forward in the special, in the next session, we need to think of increasing the threshold by which money can be taken from infrastructure to fund other programs. And frankly, at the end of the session, we basically funded the historical tax credit and the movie film tax credit and some others. That's what they used the vehicle sales tax to fund those for the year. So that's all I got to add, but go ahead, Justin.
No, I think those are all good comments. Okay, let's, and then Reldon, if some of your folks have questions on this at the end, we'll stick around for that. HB 11, as I've been articulating, is the companion bill for Article 7. As I mentioned, you can see here, it moves the property tax provisions into statute. It creates the ability for local governments to opt out of the inventory tax. They could not before because it was in the Constitution. So they didn't even have a choice whether they taxed it in their parish. We talked about the dates when they had to make the election, July 1 of 2026, and then it'd be applicable to tax periods, January 1, 2026, and after if they elected it. And then once the exemption is elected, if they elected, they can't go back and now say, hey, we decided to exempt inventory and we want to tax it again. It's irrevocable. And as I mentioned, it's dependent upon Article 7 passing. This is just the chart I was explaining earlier. In order for local governments to have some incentive to do this, the state will grant local governments, if they do it in the first year that this is enacted, they'll give them three times their previous year collections up to 15 million. State will just make a payment to them, and that would be the incentive to try to get them to exempt inventory. If they wanted to do it over a period of five years, they've set up a chart of how much they would get each year for each parish over five years, and then that would be capped at 10 million. But again, they have to make that choice before July 1 of 2026 if they're going to do it. All right, corporate income tax, I mentioned they wanted to get down to a flat rate of three and a half. They ended up at five and a half. This bill, in order to pay for the rate reduction, it did sunset some programs, call it jobs enterprise zone, not until June 30 of the next year, but also mentioned LED secretary has some plans for remodeling those programs. It did retain, as we mentioned, historic structures. However, they capped it at 85 million annually, so a slight reduction. But for this industry, that's better than where they were headed. It was an outright elimination. They broke motion picture back. They were going to eliminate the movie film credit program, but instead they capped that at 125 million, another reduction, and then they capped research and development at 12 million. So in combination of capping these programs, that generated some savings, and then moving the rate up to five and a half percent is how they were able to pay for putting these programs back in. The other thing that this bill did down towards the bottom, which is, which I think is a great feature for companies, is it created a bonus depreciation deduction. A lot of states, I'm not going to say most, but a lot of states, if you have these large capital expenditures, you had to depreciate or amortize them over time. But now we call, we created what's called year one expensing, and you can immediately deduct the cost of the expenditure in the tax year in which the property is placed into service or the expenditure is paid or incurred on some of these things. So it'll allow you to take a much greater deduction faster and not over time. All right, and then don't think this is going to be applicable to any of you all, but they did change the way they handled the apportionment factor. They repealed a provision that was used by corporations operating in FGZs or foreign trade zones to mitigate or reduce their corporate income tax. They did not have to report sales that occurred in a foreign trade zone for purposes of computing their income tax. Now, they repealed that provision, and they will have to report those sales. I talked about the inventory tax credit already, and that it will be going away for C corps July 1, 2026. However, we noted that there is a conflicting provision between HB 2 and HB 10. HB 2 says that you would get a carry forward if you earn this credit for additional five years, while HB 10 says the carry forward would be an additional 10 years. Right now, you get a carry forward of 10 years, but if it was HB 2 that they're going to go by, it'd be 15 years. If it's HB 10, your carry forward would be 20 years. I talked to the administration. They understand there's a conflict between the two bills. Their intent was always to give businesses an additional 10 years to carry the credit forward for a total of 20 years. If it comes out from the Law Institute that it's HB 2, that was the latest expression of intent, and it's only 15 years, then in the fiscal session, they would file a bill and increase it by five years and get us to the 20-year carry forward mark. All right, let's go to HB 3, the franchise tax. The simplest and probably the best bill of the session, it just eliminates the tax, which is great. So no longer have to pay that complicated franchise tax. All right, income taxes, I mentioned, got rolled into sales tax. I'm going to carry, I'm going to talk about the income tax portion. I'm going to punt it over to Rachel, talk about sales tax, and Jeff. Provides for a flat 3% individual income tax. It increased the standard deduction to 12,500. We had a rate of 1.85%. That was from 0 to 12.5%. And low-income earners would have said, hey, we're now going from 1.85% to 3%, not fair. So they just created the fact that up to 12,500, no one pays tax anymore. So they even got a reduction. Only had to pay 1.85%. It's now a zero between 0 and 12.5 of income. Nobody pays tax on that. And then the 3% kicks in. The annual retirement exemption got kicked up to 12,000. That's a great thing. This is one thing that personally, having really worked in the private sector all of my life, I wish it would be even on a fairer playing footing. But state retirees get 100% of their retirement income exempt from personal income tax. If you retire from the private sector, and it could be same jobs, one in state, one in private, current losses, you only get 6,000 exempt from retirement income, and they doubled that to now 12,000. It's, you know, it's definitely increasing it by 100%, but it's still only 12,000, whereas again, state retirees get all of their income exempt from. I wish that that'd be a little bit more parity there from private sector retirees. They did repeal, though, the net capital gains deduction. And, you know, you go to sell your business or holding on to other capital gain property, you need to be conscientious that that is no longer available to you. All right, Rachel, you want to tackle? Jeff, y'all want to tackle sales and use tax?
Sure, I can go ahead and start. So House Bill 10 was the big bill, the big sales tax bill, it's about 162 pages. It is the one that increased the rate from 4.45% to 5%. That's through the end of 2029, then it will be reduced down to 4.75 in 2030. Telecommunications, they added an additional 5% sales tax on all telecommunications services. The state's going to collect this, and it's going to be deposited into a local revenue fund. I think this is one of the ways that they're going to help offset some of the hits that the locals are taking with some of these changes. This bill also shifted a bunch of exclusions to exemptions. So, you know, if something is an exclusion, it's typically read in favor of the taxpayer, where if it's an exemption, it's read in favor of the tax collector. And so this kind of puts a little bit bigger burden of proof on the taxpayer to say that they qualify for a particular exemption. And it also reorganized the statutes by moving a bunch of exclusions to exemptions. They went ahead and started putting a lot of similar categories of exemptions together. Things were all over the place in all the sales tax statutes. So now they have a section specifically dedicated to medical exemptions. There's one for agricultural. There's one for manufacturing machinery and equipment, schools and educational materials, and intergovernmental and government exemptions. They did add, if you remember, they were looking to add 40 additional services. We currently have eight. They wanted to add 40 services. They only ended up adding two additional services, which it's pre-written computer software access service and information services. And those were kind of covered in the digital goods as well. So basically, pre-written computer software access service is stuff that's in the cloud. So if you're accessing software in the cloud, typically, we would say that was a non-taxable service, but they've put that in the statute now as it is a taxable service. And then access to information, whether it's in the cloud or however you want to access information, that's going to be taxable as well.
So two things here, Rachel. One, Reldon, I know there was a lot of concern by this industry on transportation and freight charges being taxable going forward. And that was what they intended to do with one of those services. Since that bill did not pass, we don't see where those, that should be a concern right now, transportation and freight. Now, when I talk, when I close up at the end, they may try to tackle services again in the fiscal. So I'm not saying we're completely out of the woods, but for this package, that did not happen and no immediate concern. Also, on the information services, this is one where there's just not great definitions around what is going to be considered access to information. And we know that that's an area that needs to be better defined, particularly with the amount of different providers that companies. that companies use to access certain information.
And I will add, in addition to the freight and transportation, all of the services to immovable property that they were looking at taxing, that did not pass as well. So I know there was a lot of complicated stuff within those statutes and a lot of questions, and they ended up dropping all that. There were a lot of changes that went back and forth throughout the two-week session. But these are some of the things that did not change. So the MME exemption, they wanted to pass that down to the locals and make it mandatory, but it's still an option at the local level. There are about five parishes that opt in to the MME exemption. They also tried to reduce the opportunities for the exemption where they said you had to capitalize it in order to qualify. But they put the language back as it is today, and it's eligible for depreciation. So really, not much changed on the MME. They were kind of looking at trying to make a lot of changes, but not much changed. There is a requirement now that the local tax collectors have to adjust their returns and start having taxpayers report for prescription drugs and manufacturing machinery equipment on separate lines. This is all in an effort to kind of quantify what the impact would be to the locals in the event that they wanted to exempt prescription drugs at the local level or MME. Louisiana is one of, I think, two states that taxes prescription drugs, and it is only taxed at the local level. So it creates a lot of complications. And then manufacturing exemption or the manufacturing machinery equipment, again, is optional at the local. And they are trying to bring our bases, the state and local tax bases, more uniform. And so the parishes were pushing back on these two because it would have big implications for them as far as dollars were concerned, but nobody could really quantify it. So they're trying to make them add lines to their returns to try to come up with a number. Business utilities, they're still gonna be taxed at 2%, so no changes there. State vendors' compensation credit, when you file your returns, you do get a credit. It was reduced from 1,500 per month to 750. The local, I think this was done by accident, but the local vendors' compensation credit has been fully repealed. I don't think that was intended to be done, but the locals are kind of discussing that issue right now. And I could see that coming back up during the fiscal session, so they can fix that. Annual sales tax holiday.
Let me add some emphasis there, Reldon, because the folks on here have to collect at the state and local level, right? And we have the most complex, complicated system of sales tax collection in the country. And if there is a state that should be a billboard for why you should get vendors' comp, it's ours, okay? And for them to have repealed it at the local level just makes no sense because that's where most of the complication is and that's where most of the time is spent. We do know that local governments got their way a lot during this session. And so the question is, was this something they kind of snuck in there to generate more money at the local level? Was this unintended? But there's no way your members on here should not be compensated for helping local governments collect the tax that's due to them with the system we have today.
And I was on a call with a bunch of collectors on Friday, and I got the sense that this was by accident. Now, I don't know that for sure, but that's kind of what I was gathering on the phone. So that's why I think it will be addressed during the fiscal. The annual sales tax holiday and hurricane preparedness sales tax holidays were repealed. And then they repealed the lease or rental with an operator exclusion. You know, I think our position on the rental with an operator, it's still a service. If you're renting something and it comes with an operator, the operator is maintaining care, custody, and control of that and using whatever you're renting, it's our position that it's still a service and it's not one of the services that are specifically taxed in Louisiana. So whether or not the state and/or the parishes will agree with that, you know, we'll have to see. But I definitely think, you know, this is an issue in other states and it's not specifically outlined in the law in certain, in other states like it was here. And it's still considered a service in those other states. So I do think there is some, you know, we should push back on this particular issue. Okay, Mary, next slide. Okay, so this was the statute that will allow for contracts.
One second, Rachel. I think somebody's question is timely here. They were just asking about this, Reldon, in the chat feature. Yeah, Brian, we're gonna hit it right now. So go ahead, Rachel. Yeah.
Okay. So 47305.11 is still in the statute. And this addresses contracts that are entered into within 90 days of a new tax or a tax increase. And so it's still there. And Jeff, I don't know if you wanna kind of expand upon this. I know you had some dealings with it back in 2016.
Yeah, for whoever was around to deal with all the craziness that's happened in 2016 with suspending exemptions and raising tax rates, that's when they first added the new penny to make it 5%. That was probably the first time, at least at the state level, that this statute got invoked in probably decades. And so I think there was a lot of confusion, probably on the department's part as well. There is a form that LDR has. It's the R1075 form that you can download off of their website. And you basically fill that out. It's fairly straightforward form, but you have to attach your contract as well. And so I think in 2016, when the rate changed, many, many contractors did submit that application, that form. And there wasn't a whole lot of, I guess, communication or visibility when the state would agree to allow the contractor to use the old rate versus when they would say, no, no, this contract doesn't qualify. And I think a lot of contractors got frustrated. They did update the law in 2017. So I think under the old law, it was just lump sum or unit price. And then they added, which you can see here on the screen, they added fixed fee contracts or guaranteed maximum price construction contracts. The current form, I don't think ever got updated. So the current form just has kind of a checkbox by lump sum unit price. So there may be a little bit of extra added comment you might need to put on the form. But in any event, if you've got a contract that's ongoing or that is basically entered into within 90 days of the new rate going into effect, and it's a contract where in the view of the state that you don't have any mechanism for recouping the new extra tax cost, that is what this statute is designed to address. Again, I imagine there probably, since this all is going to be going into effect in January, there's probably gonna be a flood of these applications going into the state. So I don't know if we have any good sense of how long it's gonna take them to turn around these applications. But in any event, that's the remedy for the rate going up.
Let me jump in here before we go to the next slide on digital goods. I want to restate Brian's question specifically. I think it was addressed, but I just wanna say it out loud again because this is a very impactful thing for us. So Brian's question was, is Louisiana revised statute 47,305.11 effective for this sales tax increase?
Yes.
Should contractors file Form 1075s for contracts that are signed prior to 3/31/25?
Yes. So anything, I guess the theory is that you're negotiating before the rate goes into effect. So if you've got something that you're in talks for, you've got things substantially drafted and priced out. Yeah, so it's, yes, exactly. So it's a 90-day window after January 1st that you can still file that form for.
That way you can maintain that old rate. And I presume some of your contracts are, Reldon, bid the project based on that rate. And you may not be able to go back in and effectuate a change in the contract. So this gives you an opportunity to at least keep the sales tax rate the same.
Exactly. And then the final part of his question was, submit the 1075, but then also bid with the old sales tax rates to maintain the old 4.45% state sales tax rate for those projects. So that's what you just answered there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, just important enough to restate for clarity.
Yeah, for anybody that's gone down the rabbit hole of looking at bills and it gets confusing at times, what got repealed or what didn't, this provision of the law was not touched by HB10. So this is still intact going forward.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 8, which was the digital goods and products. It's Act 10. As Jason said, all these were signed last week by the governor. But basically, the high level of this was we've moved more into a digital economy. And sales tax has always been placed on tangible personal property. And so this was an effort to capture, you know, what used to be tangible, that's now digital, to capture that in the sales tax base. So as we discussed before, it did add two new services, the pre-written computer software access service and information services. And then they're gonna tax digital products, which are your movies, your books, and different things like that. That used to be in tangible format, but is digital. The sales taxes applied when the taxpayer acting as the consumer views, accesses, downloads it and receives the benefit of the digital product. And the statute goes on to kind of address how it's sourced. And typically, you know, it's sourced somewhat similar to when you are purchasing tangible personal property. If you receive it at the seller's place of business, it would be taxed there. If you receive it where you are as the purchaser, it would be taxed at that location. There were a couple. Can you move to the next slide, Mary? This kind of went back and forth through the two-week session. They wanted to put some exemptions in this in order not to tax B2B transactions. And it started off with the first exemption of where you have to meet all these three criteria. Basically, it's purchased or licensed exclusively for commercial purposes, directly in the production of goods and services for sale to its customers, and those are taxed as well. And so it also included, oh, they're not defining commercial purposes. So that's not super clear. But the original draft of the bill also included an exemption for computer enterprise software systems, which would be a lot of your ERP systems, accounting systems, back office systems, and stuff like that. They actually pulled that out of the bill. They put it back in. They pulled it out again. So kind of where we are right now is with this exemption, which is basically, you know, software or services or digital products that are used in the production of whatever, you know, you're selling. They also, it also shall not apply to digital products created solely for the business needs of the person who created the digital products and are not the type of digital products that are offered for sale. So something that you do internally, that would not be taxed. And then, next page, there is a specific carve-out for the healthcare industry and the banking industry. So, you know, software, computer software access services, which a lot of times we call that software as a service, information services and digital products used by banks and health cares, there's a carve-out for them, so an exemption. But that's kind of where we stand for sales tax. There was a lot more in there, a lot of other changes that could have happened at the last minute. That's kind of where we ended.
And then just kind of closing out, as we started this webinar off, there's probably more work to be done in the fiscal session. I think if I had to look at it in two buckets, one, we gotta go through and identify, Reldon, anything that needs to be cleaned up for this industry, any unintended consequences. So we got a lot of eyes on it, but y'all know your businesses best. So if y'all have anything that you catch or raises your attention, please get in touch with us and we can add it to our list of stuff that needs to be cleaned up in the fiscal. But the other thing is, they didn't get everything they wanted, right? So I think they're tasting success. There was success in 2021, a lot of success this past special. And I think they wanna keep the ball going. A couple of things I think they'll focus on down here. Some of them I hope they focus on, but completely phasing out the inventory tax. Now, one thing I did not cover in there that was not, in my opinion, was not something I wanted to see. In Article 7, they did put a provision in there that stated the legislature could never mandate local governments to repeal the inventory tax. So if Article 7 comes, you could never write a statute. If Article 7 passed that says the local governments have to eliminate inventory tax. That was, I guess, a security blanket, if you will. So that means we're stuck with finding a compromise that they would have to optionally enter into. But I think they wanna continue to work on that and find out how they can replace the funding that those parishes may lose. I do think they'll take a bite at trying to get it more services again in the fiscal. They may not go to 40, but they may try to get five or 10 or so here and start smaller. One of the things we hope they focus on is centralized sales tax. We know that that is, in my opinion, is the single greatest tax policy change we could make in the state of Louisiana. They wanted to do this reform package first, and they said they would focus on that next. I'm hoping that next is this upcoming fiscal session. And then we also talked about they have to reform the LED economic development tools programs because they're sunsetting them. And I think the next page may look at the areas that they want to kind of recreate these programs. They wanna create a site development fund. Secretary Boujwa, the head of LED, believes that we don't have enough ready sites for projects or large development in Louisiana. So they wanna invest in site readiness. They wanna create a strategic investment fund. This is basically a customized grant fund that the secretary can use to help win jobs that we're being, not jobs, but projects that we're competing with other states for. And then we have quality jobs enterprise zone program. I think that's gonna be remodeled to be more of a high-impact and high-wage job creation program. So I think that'll take the place of the enterprise zone and quality job program in terms of, you know, trying to promote high-paying wages in Louisiana. So with that, I know that was a lot. I'll open it up to any questions. I don't see any in the chat feature, Reldon, but well, I'm seeing one come in now. Do the additional services that will be subject to state sales tax also now become taxed for local sales tax? Look, Robert, that's a great question on a many a fronts and there's only so much you can cover in this short time. But yes, the two, what we are calling services that they added, the pre-written software and the informational services, that would also be taxable at the local level. The digital goods would also be taxed at the local level. So it would state in local. That's why we're so concerned about what the definitions are. It's one thing if the state promulgates a definition of information services. The local government's parishes do not have to follow that, okay? Or what software is, they don't have to follow that. Each parish, until we get centralized sales tax, can have their own interpretation of what they think these things mean. And that's what makes it very difficult to collect sales and remit sales in Louisiana. Now, the subset of that or the other conversation piece that happened, one of the reasons that the services bill stalled was because we don't have centralized sales tax collection. It's one thing that they added these two services, but if you talk about adding 40 services, different definitions, what's freight, what's transportation, you know, what's repair, what's maintenance? And you got 40 new definitions with state and local, it becomes a nightmare in terms of how you handle these items. In the conversation around centralized sales tax and not having it here in Louisiana, I think did help lead to the stalling of not of not allowing those forty new services into our base. They even got to a point where they did, Robert, in one version of the services bill, in order to get it passed, was make those services only collectible by the state, and then the state would dole the local portion of the revenue out. They did go in Article seven and set up some funds that if we start taxing more services in the future, that's how they could be handled. I'm not saying they will follow that, but there is a lot of discussion around how services would be collected in the future and if you allow local governments to take part in the administration of those if we don't have a centralized sales tax. So hopefully that answers answers your question. Another question come in. I assume the same complexity exists with taxation for rental with an operator. Each parish may or may not continue to recognize that is exempt. I think you're spot on, but Rachel and Jeff, y'all deal with this issue every day for our clients. You want to hit that again?
Yeah, I mean, I could see the state agreeing with our position that it's still a service, but I think the parishes are definitely going to push back on on that issue. And to to your point with the parishes kind of having their own interpretation, that was on full display up at the during the session because I think Orleans Parish got up there and said they were already taxing digital products and services. I think Chairwoman Julie Emerson was like, wait, what?
Yeah, completely blew my mind. Part of what's going on here is if you go back to the bigger picture and Secretary Nelson ran for governor on making our state more like Texas, giving local governments more revenue through property and sales tax in exchange, getting rid of the personal income tax. Part of this was to let locals tax these items. So you're shifting more local revenue down there in exchange, maybe you can exempt inventory tax or they have more revenue. But the parishes all argued that, hey, and it is, that that some of the revenue would be different for different parishes. That's why you heard Rachel mention on the sales tax return, they're going to keep a separate line item for manufacturer machinery equipment so they can try to figure out how much parishes would be given up or in certain areas, how much would be given up on M M and E. But New Orleans got up there and said, all these items that y'all think are not being taxed, we already taxed those. So we disagreed with the state anyway. And so they were making that argument because they were saying this revenue wasn't going to generate us any more revenue because we disagree with the state and we're already taxing digital goods. So that just completely blew my mind. Let's see, I don't see, Relden, any more questions in the in the chat feature right now.
So I do have some questions that were sent in to me directly that I've been writing down. One comment that I want to make in after this discussion is exactly the argument that the construction industry has been saying forever regarding centralized tax collection. Right now, if you do business statewide, you have to deal with sixty six different tax collectors. And you have sixty six different interpretations and procedures, and it is extremely onerous. So if you want to talk about retention, you want to talk about recruitment, centralizing tax collection, making it same no matter what parish you're in around the state is a huge step in the right direction. And you guys just, you know, proved the point right there with that discussion. Do you see, and I know Jason and I have had some conversations kind of offline, but, you know, it seems to me that a full on frontal attack to force centralized tax collection is, let's just say, an uphill battle, to say the least. Do you do you kind of see this a little bit of a drip campaign eating around the edges to get to that point over a period of time with these different kind of approaches? And well, this would be collected by the state, and then if these come in, they would be collected by the state, kind of like chipping away at the stone. Do you kind of see that as as the current strategy, maybe?
I do, and I mean, that's the current strategy by the administration. And we'll see whether or not that 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 works. Look, I think local governments got a lot of the protections that they asked for this session. And when I went through some of the some of the budget bills and the fact that now property tax exemptions are in the statute, we want to, we want a three fourths vote in order to ever increase any of those property tax. We see some tenants of protections around centralized sales tax in Article seven. So the hope is, is that that the administration through that got some level of confidence with local governments that they're trying to work with them. And then hopefully in the fiscal session, they begin to roll out some tenant of what centralized sales tax collection would look like. One of the issues that we've had is who is that entity? And who's going to control that entity? Most states, it's the state that does it. But we've had conversations here recently. There is a board called the Uniform Local Sales Tax Board that's made up of all the local collectors. Does it go to the Uniform Local Sales Tax Board? And they handle state and local. So you now have locals kind of policing how the state does it versus state having it and policing how the locals do it. That might be where they try to shift it to and they can get a compromise. Of course, the state would have to participate in that. And there's some, again, there's some tenants of the ULSTB that I didn't get into being more protected in the rewrite of Article seven. And that's why I'm sensing they may push it to them to be the state collector as to the Department of Revenue, but that remains to be seen. Rachel, Rachel was appointed by the governor to sit on what they call the Parish E-file Committee that many of you. She is the representative from Business and Industry. And Rachel, I don't know if you've heard any more through your meetings with respect to that.
I have not heard anything since the session. They're kind of moving forward forward with revamping Parish E-file and modernizing it. So and they have a deadline of January twenty twenty six to do that. But I suspect as we have more and more calls after session, that they're going to bring up some of these issues. But I will add, I mean, the Remote Sellers Commission is collecting state and parish tax right now and just, you know, distributing the parish tax. And as far as I know, there are no major issues with that, so it can be done.
And and the reason they did it for remote sales and not everybody else is because of the Wayfair decision. And local governments knew that if they didn't have a centralized collector for remote sales, they wouldn't get any revenue at all. And so the point Rachel's making is they did it and they're not complaining and it's working fine. So why can't we just do it for everything, you know?
And out of state businesses only have to file one return, whereas in-state businesses still have to file their state return and multiple parish returns if they're operating in multiple parishes. Doesn't seem fair, but.
So we're beyond backwards on this issue, but, you know, I do think it's going to be important for us to continue to talk about it. So the administration or whoever else can't say, oh, it wasn't a big deal. Nobody really mentioned this dysfunction or this piece of it. So we got to at least keep it in the conversation.
So Jason, we nominate you to write a white paper on centralized tax collection, and the title should be Beyond Backwards. I love it, that's perfect. All right, so I have, just for the group, I have three questions. So if you have another question that's burning on your heart, go ahead and either email that to me or drop it into the chat. I'm going to ask these three questions, and then if no others, then we'll we'll talk about next steps. All right, so this one is restating this. So this is on inventory tax. So listening to the comments that were given here today, the current inventory tax situation will remain the same until July the first, two thousand twenty six. And then at that point, it is only a change for C corporations going forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, and the change meaning C corps will no longer be able to get the credit whether or not a parish decides to exempt inventory or not. So if you're operating in East Baton Rouge Parish, and East Baton Rouge Parish does not choose to exempt inventory, you're still going to pay the tax to the parish. You're just not going to be able to get a credit back from the state for that tax you paid to EBR Parish if you're set up as a C corporation. Now, the package, I want you all to know, started out worse. They were getting rid of the inventory tax altogether, day one, effective January one of this year. We at least got them to push it back to two thousand twenty six so that it gives us the ability to work with legislators, local governments during the fiscal session to try to come up with a deal. Perfect world, you want the tax to go away at the same rate the credit goes away. Okay, in other words, the credit doesn't go away until the tax goes away. That's the structure that was put together, and so you should detangle that structure, getting getting rid of both at the same time. But but fortunately, the way the package is set up now, that's not the case. So it does give us some time to continue to have discussions and hopefully find a solution to get us there.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so next question, again, some a little, I'm sorry, this one is talking about the Tax Foundation and the rankings. And so what is it correct that you said that prior to this special session, we were fortieth, I think? And now, because they didn't get the full package, but with what they got, you think we'll be in the mid twenties? Or is that right?
Yeah, so and I'll go back a step further because the reform shouldn't go unnoticed that happened in two thousand twenty one. That's when we lowered the personal income tax rate, we lowered the corporate income tax rate, we began to phase out the franchise tax. Prior to that, Mary, what what were we, prior to two thousand twenty one, we were forty four, I think it was, to be exact. And then when the Tax Foundation just recently scored the reforms that were done in twenty one, two thousand twenty one, we went from forty fourth to fortieth, okay? Now, what the Tax Foundation is saying, based on the changes of the bills that are finally passed, the new act numbers you're seeing, we should go from fortieth to about twenty five, twenty six. But we won't know until they released their two thousand twenty six Business Tax Competitive Rankings. They can give us where they think we will be. But keep in mind, and this is important, Relden, that's where they're telling us if they scored everything right now, today, okay? But other states are going through sessions. Other states are reforming their tax codes and trying to become more competitive. So we're looking at it as of today. What if Mississippi decides to eliminate their personal income tax altogether? Well, they're going to take a big shoot up and it may cause us not to go as high. So, you know, it's great that we're doing this because we're so far behind, but other states are continuing to try to improve as we as we as we go forward to.
The second part of that question is, you know, with this increase by the Tax Foundation, was the increase in sales tax taken into account with this ranking? Because aren't we now the highest in the country with combined sales tax?
Yes, I, and that's, so a couple of things, I think, prevented us from going up to number eight, if you're looking at what was originally filed. One, we didn't really get rid of the inventory tax. It's a local optional, local optional thing, so that hurt us. We were supposed to go down to three and a half on corporate income tax. We're now at, we're now at five and a half. And then now, instead of kind of vying for the highest sales tax rate in the country, we we officially did it. We're going to have the highest combined sales tax rate in the country between when you look at the five percent state rate. And on average, the Tax Foundation gives us, I think it's a five and a half percent score for when you take all parishes and add them up and get an average, it comes out to about five and a half. So we're now at a ten and a half percent sales tax rate overall, state and local. That'll put us at the highest, and so that will obviously ding us some more. So when you take all of those things in to consideration, then 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 I think that's why we didn't go to eight, then we're now around twenty five, twenty six. But perhaps, you know, they can tackle some of these things in the in the fiscal, get us to centralized sales tax, eliminate the inventory tax. Some of those things would help us mitigate that that impact.
All right, and thank you, Jason. And last question we have, with all of these changes and the timeframes that were shared on the slides earlier, is there any stated grace period as so many of this will change, both on the local and the state level?
You know, that is a, that is a great question and something Rachel and Jeff or Mary, I put y'all on the spot. I know we advocated for that there would be basically a kind of interest free, penalty free provision. That was when we once thought there were so many new items going into base, the new forty taxable services. It was going to be a while before we could all figure out what's being taxed and what's not taxed and what these definitions were. And as businesses were trying to comply, there would be at least a six month or a year grace period. I do not think that got put in because the Services Bill did not pass, Relden. So now, as it relates to digital goods and the sales tax exemptions that are being repealed, I think we're just going to have to be on our game starting January one. And we're going to have to be working with the Department of Revenue and local governments to the best we can to understand how some of the stuff, particularly along the lines of digital goods, is going to be interpreted. So we did not get that grace period because the Services Bill did not pass.
Okay, that is all that I have received for questions. I don't see any more in the chat. So before we part ways, I'll simply share with you that our board at L A G C have had some conversations recently going forward, just planning strategy, how we proceed into the regular fiscal session and ultimately work to prioritize investing in our infrastructure. We need to prioritize it, we need to protect it, and then certainly increase it. There's a lot of conversation about reforms in various areas, and I think that some of those reforms will have to take place prior to additional funding coming in. But we do have kind of a timeframe and a strategy on our side, and we'll continue to advocate on your behalf in that regard and keep you posted on all those developments. Jason and your team at Adventis, Daryl and Jesse at Capital Partners, we're very grateful for your support and for your partnership with this. Thank you for joining us on the webinar today. Within a few days, everyone that participated, we will send out the link to the webinar recording as well as the article that I mentioned and the slide presentation from today. With that, we thank you for joining us and wish you a good, good morning, good afternoon. Thank you, bye bye.